We want to welcome everyone to our monthly meeting. And
This opportunity to introduce our new administrative assistant, Mrs. Tara Ruling. We want to welcome you. Thank you for being here with us and we look forward to working with you in the future. Next, we would come to our roll call, Ms. Tara.
Randy Early Howard.
Here.
Brian King.
Here.
Joe Lindsey.
John Lowe.
Here.
Erica Moore.
Here.
Chris Pass.
Here.
Bill Porter. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Tara.
As we call our meeting to order, we first want to come to our opportunity for recognitions and showcases and for that, I'll turn it over to our Director Ridge.
Yes, I would like to recognize Jackie Skelly, Special Education Supervisor at this time to recognize our Project Search students and program.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us a few minutes to share some highlights of one of our special education programs in Blount County schools. We're privileged to be a program site for Project Search, an internationally acclaimed model for transitioning students with intellectual disabilities from high school to employment. Project Search uses an integrated agency approach to support individuals with disabilities such as vocational rehabilitation, developmental disability organizations, pre-employment agencies who provide job coaches, one or more host businesses, Project Search interns, their families or caregivers in the school system. Some of the background on the program in Blount County, this program started in Blount County in 2015. We just celebrated our 10th year. We've had 54 total interns over those 10 years of program completion. Project Search has been awarded 100% employment to our Blount County Program Search each year. The majority of the past interns have maintained employment and utilized support programs when changing jobs. Several are still employed by the same employer that hired them when they completed the Project Search internship. Many of these interns are employed by Blount County schools in our cafeteria or custodial positions. We're proud to hire our own. Karen Johnson has moved into the Project Search instructor position this school year. Previously, she worked with Project Search in Georgia for 11 years. Due to our interns working this evening, ironically, they were unable to attend. However, Karen will tell you a little more about the interns and businesses that have been participating in Project Search this year.
Good evening. As you mentioned, I am from Georgia and I had the privilege to be an instructor there for 11 years and I am so excited, blessed to be here and back in Project Search with the Blount County schools. And I want to say too that I am extremely impressed with this county as far as just the support that they give to this program. I do hope you all saw that that was 100% employment that you have achieved here in this county, which is, it is not common as far as any of the other sites internationally. I know that that was recognized during the 10-year celebration for that. So, a little pressure for me as far as just the interns coming up and I have no doubt that we will be able to get them employed as well. As far as our rotations, just to give you a little bit of information on that, our interns do have a 10-week rotation. They do three 10-week rotations during the year. We have an hour-long class, time of class in the morning and they learn a lot of the job skills. They learn what it takes as far as keeping a job, retaining a job. We teach them money management. They have an email, we have an email mentor program where they email businesses, business mentors that are able to give them a little perspective on what work, the workforce is like. Our interns are able to ask them questions and then we discuss that as well. So, within the classroom, there's just a lot of opportunities for us to talk about what it takes to retain a job and to be successful in a job. Currently, our interns are working at the Hilton. We have rotations in the Hilton as far as in the food service. We have it in the maintenance area, laundry department. So, we have opportunities that the hotel has given us and we are very thankful for that. We're also blessed to be able to have an internship over at the Prisma Health in the supply chain department where one of our interns is working. We've added Blount partnership to our business advisory committee in the hopes that we can continue to create awareness of the program with the local businesses in order to promote interns becoming employed with the community. And I'd also like to take an opportunity to just give a shout out to those businesses in our community in the last 10 years that have been involved and supportive and instrumental in hiring our interns. And those businesses are Airport Hilton, Arconic, Blount County Schools, Blount Memorial Hospital, Chicken Salad Chick, DRS, Fair Park Health and Rehabilitation Center, Goodwill Industries, Home Depot, Lowe's, McDonald's, Met's Culinary Cafe, and Michael's. So, I just, we have an incredible program here. I'm extremely happy to be a part of this county program here now. And honestly, just as far as a testimony, as far as being an instructor since 2009 and then here now, I love the opportunity to see the growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the school year as far as just the confidence that you see building with our interns, the confidence as far as just believing and knowing that they can be productive members of our society. I'm blessed to know that I have, I have past students from 2009 that have continued to be employed in their communities. And so, I'm just super excited to be able to continue on with this and to be part of this wonderful county that has been so successful. So, thank you very much. I also have some brochures that I brought. I'll leave them with Jackie. So, thank you.
Yeah, that is such a great program. We're so proud to have that here in Blount County and provide that opportunity for those students to join the workforce. At this time, I would like to call Jed West, Principal at Heritage High School, to talk about the fantastic baseball season that the Heritage Mountaineers had this year.
Mr. Ridge, Mr. Pass, Board, thank you for having us out tonight recognizing our baseball team. You know, when I think about a high school experience, there's some key components there, right? A positive high school experience for kids is outstanding academics and preparation, but also with that is the athletic side, the extracurriculars, the clubs, the groups, the events that kids get to experience. And, you know, we talk about climb a lot at Heritage High School and one of those key components is that the climb part is, that came from, for us, centered, started with athletics even before we adopted that as our mission at Heritage High School. And I know that's something that Coach Bennett and his staff have adopted at Heritage High School. If you ever drive down Tukalichie Pike and happen to glance over at the baseball field, you're going to see those boys out there grinding, putting in the work, putting in the time, the energy, and effort. And that's a testament to the culture that Coach Bennett, Coach Lindsey, Coach Crevo, Coach Delozer, and his staff have built. So, I'm going to let Coach Bennett come on up and brag about his team from the spring of 2025.
Thank y'all for inviting us up here. Obviously, this is a good group of kids. We had a great year, but just to look at these kids and see just a great group of kids, they're awesome in the classroom, and it just spills over to the field. I'd like to introduce, first off, we were district champions the year before when they were all freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. And then last year, we were the district season champions. Twenty-five and fourteen broke the school record for wins and the first time in school history that we won a district season. But I'd like to introduce the kids we had last year. RJ Lardy, who's a pitcher for us, committed to the, to Maryville College to go pitch for them. Beckett Littleton, who's a sophomore catcher for us. Tegan Ruling, who was all-district last year, he's our catcher. Evan Webb, who had a great year last year, he's a junior. Logan Hong, who's a junior, this, no, Evan's a senior, sorry, he was a junior last year. Logan Hong, who's a junior this year. Ethan Markham, who was district Rookie of the Year last year, had a great year all-district. Brayden Cooper, who was a senior last year. Thomas Bowers, who was our third baseman, he'll be a senior this year. Gavin French, who was a district MVP as a sophomore last year and who committed to the University of Tennessee in baseball this year. Matt McNeil, East, who'll be a senior this year. Easton Bennett, who'll be a sophomore, and then Brayden Littleton. So, like I said, couldn't ask for a better group of kids. Also, Coach Lindsey's here, our Anfield coach. He's been with me for almost 20 years. So, we've been together a long time. We're kind of like an old married couple, I guess. So, but love these guys and appreciate y'all recognizing us.
Come in, Tyler, guys. Come on, come on in. Ready, one, two. One more. One, two.
Thank you, Mr. West and Coach Bennett. At this time, I would like to call up Mark Dowlen, Principal at Eagleton College and Career Academy, to talk about the Eagleton Lady Royals softball team.
Thank you, Mr. Ridge, Mr. Pass, Board members, for this opportunity to recognize our Lady Royals here tonight. As a former high school softball coach, it's pretty special to be able to stand up and share with you all about the success that they had in just their second-ever varsity season. And some of you were there when we opened the park at Eagleton Ballpark and had the first pitch on the new field. So, we knew from the beginning of the year it was going to be a special year, excuse me, just to get that season started the way we did and then the new facilities. But new facilities weren't enough for them. And so, a trip through the district season and ended up second runner-up in the district in regular season with an eight-and-two district record. Those two bosses came to a school just really near us that wears maroon and gray that have now moved, moved out of our district and moved up into a different classification. So, they won't be in our way this year. So, went into the district tournament, again, finished runner-up to the same school that, but that allowed us an opportunity to go to the region where they were successful, made it to, made it to the region finals, and then advanced on to the sectionals. If you've been around athletics for a while, you're probably familiar with that being called substate. Now, they call that sectionals where they travel down to Kingston and took a heartbreaking one-nothing loss. And I was there and there might have been a questionable interference call that killed a momentum inning that would have given us our chance. I think Natalie might have been involved in that play. So, but it's great to see two of our seniors back this year. And something that's unique about Lady Royals softball team is that being the 612 and under the same roof and the same building, our eighth graders get to play up. And so, then in that sectional softball game, I was looking over there at third base and we had an eighth grader starting at third base on a high school sectional softball team. And then had a couple of seniors there. So, that, that full gamut. So, super proud of these ladies and want to bring up Coach Kevin Bean to introduce them and talk about their team. But we're really proud of all they accomplished.
Good evening. I just want to say I am, we are so proud, myself and our staff, of what we, what these girls accomplished this season. I'm quite sure nobody expected it to go as far as it did. And what made it even more amazing for us is that a couple of injuries that hurt us throughout the season changed our lineup constantly, probably the last, I don't know, at least the last month. We just changed and changed and changed trying to figure it out. We finally found what would work and that's what put us over the top. And Mr. Dowlen said, the, the region, the district in the region, it was, we knew, we knew we had to finish at second place behind Alcoa to move on. We knew we had, we had a shot, maybe to compete with Alcoa a little bit, but it was going to be tough. As long as we finished second, we knew we could move on. And so, that was our goal. Last year, the year before, we made it to region. We didn't get to the region final, though. So, this year, our goal was to make it to region final and get to substate, get to sectionals, and who knows from there. And that's what they did. And I'm extremely proud of all of them. Tonight, we have two ladies that graduated last year, Carly Brapson and Natalie Merle. Juniors this year, we have Kyla Law, Cassie Spears, Gracie Fenstamaker. And sophomore, we have Molly Davis. Freshman, Carly Baker. Freshman, Madison Fenstamaker. Carly, Carly Brapson and Kyla and Lila all made all-district team last year. So, super proud of them. We're excited to get to work for next season. I'm, we're definitely miss, we're definitely going to miss Carly and Natalie. They were a big part of our team last year. We have the last four years. So, we're definitely going to miss them. But I am so proud of them. Can't wait to start with them again. And let's get started in February. Thank you.
Next, we would come to our public comment. And as we do that, we will first hear our public comment disclaimer.
Thank you for your interest in addressing the Blount County Board of Education. Citizens wishing to speak must provide their school board district number and direct comments to the board as a whole. Personal complaints against individual employees are not permitted in this setting and should instead be directed to the Director of Schools or their designee through the central office. Each speaker is allotted three minutes. Please be respectful and mindful that Tennessee Code 3917306 prohibits disruptions during official meetings.
First tonight to speak on items on our agenda, we have Ms. Alita Ledendecker.
Thank you and good evening. I'm speaking on Agenda Item Number Four, Bible Release Time through the Elgin Children's Foundation. I'm a retired educator and removing students from class for an hour each week will have a negative effect on academics, no matter how creative the scheduling is. Furthermore, that scheduling affects all students, not just those whose families opt into the program. This is one of the arguments the teachers at Sturkey Elementary had against starting the trial of BRT there in 2019. Schools should be focused on academics, not religious indoctrination. There are many flavors of Christianity, as can be noted by the many different kinds of churches found here in Blount County. Mr. Pass, as pastor of one such church, I'm sure you would want your flavor of Christianity imposed during Bible release time and not, say, Presbyterianism or Catholicism. here. We're speaking on the same, the same right of agenda five of race, and probably need to use just for public, um, information. I think this is really an attempt to use public schools and public resources to access children from indoctrination for a specific view of Christianity. What my wife mentioned, there are a lot of different views. Church Christ, Baptists don't agree, Baptists don't even agree with themselves, what's the right thing? Um, so, I think Bible should, um, that Blount County has enough churches, Sunday schools, um, Bible classes, weekly activities and studies. Blount County already, in that, the Bible study should be done out of school, not using school resources. It's already burdening overworked teachers, underpaid teachers and administrators. Um, the, um, one of the problems is that I think this will be used to motivate students with adult pressure on the students, to use peer pressure on other students, um, who can be labeled as outsiders and, and is in favor in a lot of ways because they don't follow the same sort of beliefs. Um, there are a lot of different options in Blount County for people who are not religious, not fundamentalist, Baptist, Catholic, still works. So, there are also litigation issues if things go wrong, I won't go into that. But basically, school time should be used for education, not indoctrination or political agendas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledendeker. Next, we would hear from Rob Spurko.
Howdy, thank you. Um, Rob Spurko, I live in District Four. Um, I feel like I should offer a disclaimer when I realize I wore my red shirt. For the younger members in the room, I am not Santa Claus. What I say is not the official opinion of the North Pole. Um, but I do wanna thank y'all for that informative packet, right, with the, the state law and the resolution and that handbook from Elgin, 'cause that answered a lot of questions I had after the, seeing the news story about it. It does seem like a, a good organization, uh, they definitely seem safety-minded with the two-adult rule and all the stuff they put in place there. Uh, I would suggest if, if y'all go through with this, maybe have them also do the New Hope Children's Advocacy Training, which is also a good program that goes a little further than just a background check. Um, but, um, so, yeah, my questions are really more logistical, um, like, I just wonder, logistically, is it really possible to get these students kinda organized off-campus, driven to an off-campus location, give them a good experience, and then get them back to campus in an hour? Uh, I mean, this is Blount County, we are not hurting for churches, but, you know, the right church with the right facilities that are accessible and everything, I think is a, a real question to think about with this program. Um, it does feel to me like it would be disruptive to the experience of the school day, to have the students, you know, kinda carted out and then back in. Um, and just from a curricular standpoint, um, I'm wondering when this would happen, like what class gets replaced with this? Like what class is expendable enough that some students don't have to take it and other students do? And what does that say to the students who do have to take it and the value of their time? Um, and so, I just think there's real questions in terms of the educational value, the educational disruption that it might present. Um, you know, I think other people have spoken to possible discrimination or whatever. Um, but, um, but yeah, it just, it feels when we're, at a time, worried about integrated testing, the third grade testing law and all that sort of stuff, that taking students out of the classroom for something unless it's got real demonstrable educational benefits, I think it's, it's something we need to seriously consider. So, thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Spurko. Um, next, we would hear from David Ball.
Good evening, Mr. Ridge and all members of the board, and since we're not supposed to direct any comments directly to any individual on the board, I'm gonna say happy birthday to all of you who had a birthday on Tuesday, or the day of the past or forthcoming twelve months. Uh, thank you for all the work you guys do, very proud of you and thankful for ya, and really proud to be, uh, here tonight to say thank you for what you're doing right now. I am here to speak on the Elgin Bible Program, and I'm gonna speak on behalf of one of our founding fathers we don't hear a whole lot about, Fisher Ames. He was born in seventeen fifty-eight, passed away in eighteen oh eight. Ames graduated from Harvard before the start of the Revolutionary War. By seventeen eighty-eight, was not only serving in Massachusetts House of Representatives, was also a member of the convention to ratify the U.S. Constitution. He was elected as a member of the first federal congress, where he helped to frame the Bill of Rights, and specifically penned the final language for the U.S. House version of the First Amendment. We're very proud and thankful for that First Amendment. At the death of George Washington, seventeen ninety-nine, he was chosen by the legislature of Massachusetts to deliver a special address. He's considered one of America's best orators of the founding era. September twentieth seventeen eighty-nine, for the Palladium Magazine, he wrote an article. He said, "We have a dangerous trend beginning to take place in our education. We're starting to put more books, textbooks into our schools containing fables and moral lessons. We are spending less time in the classroom on the Bible, which should be the principal text in the schools." Fisher Ames concluded, "The Bible states these great moral lessons better than any other mandate we could look to." In my closing moments here, I just wanted to share that, uh, some folks talk a lot in this room from month to month about some comments made by Thomas Jefferson, and he was responding to a private letter to some Baptists in New England. When he wrote that letter, uh, explaining why we have this Bill of Rights, particularly the First Amendment, he sent that letter on New Year's Day, eighteen oh two, on a Friday. Two days later, he went to church in the biggest congregation and meeting house in D.C., the House of Representatives. He was very proud to be a member of that congregation, and he was also very proud to, as the director of schools for, for D.C., he reviewed the work done by those who were under his purview, and when he saw the work done by the students, he said, "That's great, you can quote so many scriptures and so many texts." His, he implored, "The teachers, this is not only good for the students, make sure the instructors can do the same." All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Next, we would have David Barth.
Good evening, Director Ridge, Chairman Pass and board members. My name is David Barth, I live in District Four, in the great state of Tennessee and a great county of Blount. I stand in favor of the proposal to move forward with the BRT program. This program mirrors the case of Zorach versus Clausen, brought before the United States Supreme Court in nineteen fifty-two, and affirmed by a six-to-three vote. I will be reading from the, from the majority decision written by the progressive and very liberal Associate Justice William O. Douglas, that affirmed the constitutionality and the desirability of such a program. The full context of the court's decision, along with the dissenting votes and decisions, can be found at teachingamericanhistory.org. That is teachingamericanhistory.org. Part of Mister, of the Associate Judge's findings are these. "We are a religious people whose institutions presuppose a supreme being. We guarantee the freedom to worship as one chooses. We make room for as wide a variety of beliefs and creeds as the spiritual needs of man deem necessary. We sponsor an attitude on the part of government that shows no partiality to any one group and that lets each flourish according to the zeal of its adherence and the appeal of its dogma. When the state encourages religious instruction or cooperates with religious authorities, it follows the best of our traditions. For it then respects the religious nature of our people and accommodates the public service to their spiritual needs. To hold that it may not would be defined in the constitutional requirement that the government show a callous indifference to religious groups. That would be preferring those who believe in no religion over those who do believe." He continues, "I don't have time for everything he says. Please read this in its full context in teachingamericanhistory.org." He does close with this phrase, "We cannot read into the Bill of Rights a philosophy of hostility to religion." Thank you for your time, and may God bless this nation.
Thank you, Mr. Barth. Next, we would have Ms. Amy Beth Miller.
Good evening. I'm the parent of a Blount County Schools graduate and a voter in school board District One. As someone who is passionate about education and eager for Blount County Schools to provide opportunities for our students and a person of faith, I'm here to address Agenda Item Number Four. I'd like to start by reading the first line of the proposed policy, six point two zero eight one. It would allow a principal or designee to excuse a student to attend a course in religious moral instruction for up to one class period per school day. I've seen some comments comparing this to parents signing their child out of school for an appointment with the dentist or the doctor or orthodontist. I think it's, would be extremely rare for a parent to be signing their child out every school day, or even every week for such an appointment. As a parent who has had to schedule those appointments, I also know that it's difficult to get an appointment outside of school hours. I've never heard of a pediatrician or a dentist or orthodontist offering appointments on Sunday mornings. The draft policy does not indicate grade levels, but the Elgin Foundation's Bible Release Time Program seems to be aimed at indoctrinating children in grades two through six. Math isn't my strongest subject, but I, I did some rough calculations. A one-hundred-and-eighty-day school year divided by five is thirty-six weeks, so one hour a week would be thirty-six hours, a full week of instructional time. One hour a day, as this draft policy says, one-hundred-and-eighty hours total would be about five full weeks of instructional time. Our students, our educators, our schools and our district are judged by our students' performance and growth on state assessments, and I understand the policy says that they would only be released during any class that is not a tested subject. However, I also know that our teachers and staff in non-tested subjects support learning in those tested areas as well. We should be committed to maximizing instructional time, not carving away a week, or as the draft policy would allow, a month, for something that families can access on their own time outside of public school hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next, we would have Harry Rothjahn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Harry Rothjahn, District Three. I, um, I too stand as speaking for the number four item on the agenda, and I think that the curriculum, as it was approved by the state legislature, did specify one day, uh, one, uh, one hour a day. It authorized that kind of release, but I also understand, speaking with you, sir, and reading the, the proposal more closely, that you only intend to have one hour a month so as to minimize the loss of class time and that also the one hour a month cannot be, according to the legislation, uh, used at a time when there would be material taught that would have a t cap consequence. So, with those two points clarified, I think that the, uh, the fact that it's, uh, state-approved and that, um, there are only one hour a month, uh, that the, uh, release from children's academic program schedule would be sufficient to, I guess, improve their moral climate. And, uh, and certainly that has been the response from the schools in Knox County and the other forty-two counties in Tennessee, all have noticed and noted in their reporting of the results of this curriculum, that, uh, their discipline problems have been reduced and the attitudes in the school have improved. So, you know, just like, uh, we read in Genesis, chapter six, uh, verse five, "Before there was a word of God, you know, there was, there was evil, whether God said he saw that the wickedness of man was great in all the earth, and that every imagination and thoughts of his heart was only evil continuously." You know, if there's no, if there's no standard to repair to, then obviously we're going to repair to the lowest standard that is presented to us. So, I think that having a Bible release time is a wonderful opportunity for our children who needs some spiritual guidance, obviously, from the opinions of those parents that we've heard speak against it. So, I wanna thank you for your efforts in researching this matter and giving us an opportunity to raise children in the fear and admonition of God's Word. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rothjahn. That completes our public, uh, time of comment or items on our agenda. We would move next, um, to our consent agenda, and I would ask for a motion, uh, to set and approve our consent agenda. Have a motion in second, all in favor of that? If you'd let it be known by saying aye? And our consent agenda is approved. Next, I would ask for a motion to set and approve our agenda. We have a motion in a second, all in favor? If you'd let that be known by saying aye? And our agenda is set. The first item on our agenda for this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for a roof replacement for Union Grove Middle concession stand and Porter Elementary Friends Portable, fund one-seventy-seven education capital in an amount of thirty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars. I would ask for a motion to discuss. Motion in second, all in favor? Let it be known by saying aye? Okay? Uh, time of discussion, any questions or comments? Then I would ask for a motion to approve. Have a motion in a second, all in favor? If you'd let it be known by saying aye? Opposition and a like sign? And that motion passes unanimously as well. Item number two on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for a roof replacement for Union Grove Middle concession stand and Porter Elementary Friends Portable, fund one-seventy-seven education capital in an amount of thirty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars. I would ask for a motion to discuss. Motion in second, all in favor? Let it be known by saying aye? Okay? Uh, time of discussion, any questions or comments? Then I would ask for a motion to approve. Have a motion in a second, all in favor? If you'd let it be known by saying aye? And our agenda is set. The first item on our agenda for this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for a roof replacement for Union Grove Middle concession stand and Porter Elementary Friends Portable, fund one-seventy-seven education capital in an amount of thirty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars. I would ask for a motion to discuss. Motion in second, all in favor? Let it be known by saying aye? Okay? Uh, time of discussion, any questions or comments? Then I would ask for a motion to approve. Have a motion in a second, all in favor? If you'd let it be known by saying aye? Okay? Opposition and a like sign? And that motion passes unanimously as well. Item number two on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for a roof replacement for Union Grove Middle concession stand and Item number two on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding budget increase for the purchase and installation of HVAC units at Heritage Middle School, Fund 177 education capital in the amount of $131,550. I would ask for a motion to discuss. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. Now, discussion or questions or comments? I believe I'm on the right track here. Is this the system that was about 26 years old? Is it? This system is about 26 years of age, board members, so we got good service out of that one. I would ask for a motion to approve, item number two on our agenda. Have a motion in a second. Let's take a roll call vote for these, Ms. Tara.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item number three on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for the purchase and installation of field lights at Heritage High School, baseball and softball fields, Fund 177 education capital, $559,000. I would ask for a motion to discuss, item number three. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye. And we're unanimous there. Discussion or questions or comments? I would say I'm excited that we're able to fund this top of an athletic project out of Fund 177. I think that's a great thing. That's good for us as an education system. I'd ask for a motion to approve. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Let's take a roll call for that one also, Ms. Tara. Yes. Yes. Thank you. Item number four on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding Bible Release Time through Elgin Children's Foundation. I would ask for a motion to discuss, item number four. Motion to discuss, second. Have a second. All in favor of that? If you let it be known by saying aye. Okay. We come now with an opportunity for discussion, questions or comments?
I would like to say something. So I appreciate everybody's comments tonight on both sides. I think from some of the constituents that I've heard from, the top three things or questions that people have about Elgin being in our schools has to do with the instructional time, which tonight I wasn't very clear on whether it was going to be a week out of the classroom or if it was going to be a month. So I guess I got that somewhat clarified tonight, but that instructional time has been a topic of conversation. So has student safety because the students are leaving our care and we're putting them in the hands of someone else. So there's definitely some questions that surround that. And then also the legal liability as far as we as a school system is concerned, just understanding what that is for us. And so as far as the instructional time is concerned, I think some of the questions were around, I think somebody kind of mentioned it tonight, we spent, what, about $100,000 on a curriculum audit, which is, you know, to improve the BCS students' academic achievement scores. And I think now that we're talking about cutting an hour of instruction, that is kind of rubbing people the wrong way a little bit because it kind of sounds counterintuitive. And some of the questions that people asked me, and I'm not necessarily saying I need all these questions answered tonight. My first time seeing this was on Friday when we got the agenda. So just like everybody else, I just want to make sure that if this is something that we do, that we just do it right, that we execute it the right way. So some of the questions that I had from my constituents would be, will teachers have to alter their lesson plan to accommodate students who participate in this program? Are they allowed to proceed as usual? Another question that people wanted me to pose tonight is if it's specials that we mess with, such as music art gym, if this is where the time gets cut, what message are we conveying to those teachers and how do our parents feel about that? Because there's stakeholders in that as well. And then how will this affect sped students, our students with IEPs who have to meet certain scheduling requirements and our hours with accommodations if they also want to participate in this program? So these are things that I think we owe it to ourselves to try to find out about how this program is going to be rolled out. And then as far as safety is concerned, we have 14 elementary schools and four middle schools, including ECCA. So we have a lot of children that we're responsible for daily. And we take that very seriously. Safety is one of the things that we're, that the superintendent and all of us are working on as we speak. So some questions that people have is how many facilities will this equate to with our students going off campus? And then some other questions would be, what category would this program fall under in our school policy? Because is this considered a field trip for them? And if it's considered a field trip, might the district be subject to those same rules where multiple entities can be sued if something were to go awry at one of these campuses where this is held? Another question would be, what does that process look like for how churches and volunteers are vetted at this, as well? As I think that this is very important information for our parents to be able to understand on how this whole process is going to work with their children being in a facility that's not ours. And then I noticed in the program description when I went through the packet, because I highlighted some areas of concern for me when it says it recommends background checks. And I think that this should be a definite requirement as well for any volunteer and also some rules in place in case people are visiting the church campus to make sure that they're not in the same spaces where our children are held, to just further protect them. And then also is there a possibility of some fingerprinting that can be done as well to just, to ensure the safety of our children? And then how as a district do we handle parent program complaints? That's not something that's also in the packet either that's understandable right now. And then the last question that I would pose would be the legal liability as far as the school board is concerned. Someone mentioned tonight that there are multiple denominations to where our children could be going as far as this program is concerned. And I've already had churches reach out to me as far as interest, but I wasn't able to really give them any information because I don't really have a lot on how that process really works. But also some of the questions were, if you accommodate one, what does this mean in the future if we'll have to accommodate other things? Because this particular entity we may like, but what if there's something that we don't really want in our school system and doesn't represent our community? So what are the legal, the potential liabilities for us as a school board? So I think it might be pertinent for us to be able to talk to our school board attorney just to make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is. So my recommendation, and I'm okay with other people being able to speak because I want us to all be on one accord, but my recommendation would be that we postpone this for further review. And what I mean when I say that is the policy. We, I got this policy last night at four o'clock. This is no, I have had no time to be able to really look over and to see what we agree to as a school system should be in this policy. So this is definitely we can't this process.
I'll probably raise one hour per. Also says moral training. State law said to learn more for all of us, everything we are in great detail. If you take a background check in school, on, if you don't have background checks, that's just good business. Any of the churches that we would pair with need to be within Tukalichi Baptist Church, neither of our churches are within four years of pairing with churches in the process to offer students one hour a month. That's spot that works for the districts, the schools. I also want to make clear that it would be non-denominational. But if you will look at their handbook, it is Christian, let me say it that way. I know you may not like hearing this, but if you're a Christian and you get to heaven, you and I are going to be there together. It's a great blessing that take these with us to pay for the background checks and to pay for the bus transportation. That takes care of this for us for that one. We already have an MOU with Elgin and Blount County who will have their other, compensate our bus transport contractors for taking. It's neutral when it talks about other organizations. Can so? Yes, they can. But here's the caveat signal and structure of how this works. They're going to have to match up with the parents that are voluntarily willing to send their students to their program. Now, that's how that will, we got to leave that and go do the right things, okay? If you want to start a satanic club in Blount County, could you do that in the school system? Neutrally, this is why instruction in state, oh, that is possible. How many parents in Blount County want to voluntarily fill out a request form for their student to attend a satanic club? Well, good luck on that one, okay? But in that process with that and the disruption to the school, state law makes it very clear that it cannot be during any class time that is tested classes. And so it has to be done in another area of classes that it takes place. And they're going to work, let me, I may not cover every area just the same way you'd like to see it. I may jump around here a little bit. What we're discussing here tonight, and hopefully we'll be able to come to the motion to vote on, is to send this to our policy committee. For them and our directors just to reach to work in collaboration to develop the best policy for this in Blount County schools. And then they would bring that policy back to us as a board for us to look at, review, and vote on, having the best policy in place that we can have in Blount County. If you will read what the state law says, it's only able to be done, we just don't have a policy for it to be done. State law allows it already. But I want to say this, I don't want to do it just because we need a policy that covers it. I want to do it because I know from Jamie, who's the district superintendent of Morgan County Schools, I know from a pastoral friend I have in Knox County who has 150 students one day a month for an hour, that these districts, just them alone, have personally spoke to me about the moral climate change in their schools after a time period of being open to hearing more about who God is and what moral values should look like. That's all good stuff for our students to have opportunity. And again, voluntarily only, only for those who are parents who would like their student to have one hour a month within 10 minutes of the school, all secure and guaranteed safety, just like the same guarantee, when I say guaranteed safety, just like you do when you put them on a school bus this afternoon and they left to go run the route to go home. That's the kind of safety we're talking about. We opted this year, and we have put, I think, if Kevin was here, about 25 more bus monitors on our buses because we want two adults on those buses, make sure, keep everyone safe. Trying to implement that with all the high standards of safety in that. But as we do that, even then, when we vote to pass that policy, we'll run that out with a couple of schools to pilot it with and a couple of churches within that 10-minute proximity to pilot it with and work out any kinks or any things that need to be adjusted or corrected before we begin to step it out on a bigger scale. You know, quite often when we look at something that's changed, it's something different. We look at all the things that are going to go wrong. I haven't heard anybody talking about all the things that can go right from it. And I just think it's a great opportunity in that. I brought it to you for consideration in that. And I want you to see if we look at it, how it would be structured. There was a comment about 42 counties in Tennessee that are involved with Elgin. That's not the case. Where that comment's coming from, I mentioned to someone that there are 42 counties in Tennessee who currently have Bible as an elective class in their high schools. There's about 90 counties in Tennessee, 42 of them this year right now offer Bible being taught as history, geography, and literature in their high schools right now. There are opportunities to let students decide for themselves what they believe without indoctrination. When we talk about indoctrination, and of course as a pastor, you can imagine, people will, when I weigh in the campaign and Pastor John are in the campaign, some of the first things I've heard were, you're going to try to indoctrinate all of our students. And here's what I said to that. When you say indoctrination, do you mean like you only teach the theory of evolution in our schools? Is that what you mean by indoctrination? That it's not possible, there's a Creator, and that evolution is not missing a link, it's missing the whole chain? Is that what you talk about when you mention indoctrination to me? I'm just talking about an opportunity for students whose parents want them to have an opportunity to spend one hour a month in a religious training, moral value setting. Where are we going to get our values from if we don't take them from God's teachings? There are Christian schools right in our community. There may be some of you in this room that have students in Christian schools and have the opportunity and the tuition to pay and do those things. It's a great opportunity for us to consider, walk carefully through it. It didn't mention that we want to make sure we do it right if we're going to do it. I would hope there's no one on this board that whatever we're going to do, we're not going to do it to the very best of our ability, cross our Ts, dot our Is, and make sure we're doing the best possible thing that we can do. But the Elgin Children's Foundation is a great opportunity to partner with. They have those counties in Tennessee and those counties in Kentucky that we can, you can contact with and learn all the pieces of what's possible. But I can give you two references. One of them I met at TSBA's annual convention in Nashville. I walked up behind him to get a cup of coffee at a Starbucks, and we started having small talk. And out of that conversation, he looked at me and said, you should consider a foundation called the Elgin Children's Foundation. And he's the district superintendent of their school system in Morgan County. Give them a call. Have a conversation with them if you have any doubts or concerns. We would pursue this. The policy that you see that says one day, one hour per day, Mr. Ben Torres, the attorney for TSBA, gave me that for us as a template to know this is what state law allows. Now you take that and go develop the policy that will work best for you. We want to do everything that we can for this to go as the best scenario possible for everyone involved in the schools and in the community. And I know we don't want to take away anything from the schools, but we find time for a lot of things in school. Could we find one hour a month for students who voluntarily with their parents' approval have attended an opportunity to learn more about God and the Bible and good moral values and teachings that bring back a better climate to their own school? I would hope so. I would hope so. I don't think there was anything else. Background checks are 100% required with everyone, certainly student safety. If you look at a copy of the state law that we added to the amended agenda here just the last 24 hours, and that's on me, I thought it might be helpful if you saw the state law itself and what it says in there. Inside that state law, it makes very clear that the district, the board, the school system has no legal liability or responsibility from the time they step on that bus until they get back to the classroom for any outside religious opportunity release time. It's called release time. And the state law says in it, no legal liability whatsoever falls to the school system or to the board, to make that clear with you as well. Any other questions that you have at this time?
I have a question. I have a quick question. I had a lot of constituents reach out to me about this, same as Erica did, just concerning about the instructional time and being taken away from the instructional time, and you've clarified some of that for us. However, music classes, art classes, those classes are still instructional time that are very important. I myself was in band. You know, I'm a believer myself. Is this something that we could implement before or after school or is it strictly during school?
It's a during school, it's a during school opportunity, that's why it's called release time. Otherwise, it falls into like a club category of before-school club or after-school club. And I agree, we know that every aspect of every class we have, those are important too, and we know that. But as I say that, we stand back, sometimes we might have a general assembly, sometimes we go on field trips, sometimes some students might be rewarded with a special outing for making great grades or special success. So when we talk about those things, if we really were just to take a look at a list of all the things that we might come out of class to go do, we might find it's a pretty good-sized list. And that's where we're coming from. And that's why through the Elgin organization, they said, based on all of those things, they said one- they said, based on all of those things, they said one hour a month. One hour a month is a very mighty amount of time, uh, and being strategic in picking the class, uh, that they're going to miss that one hour, and they're going to miss it that one hour, one time in a month, in a month's time.
Thank you. And my other question is, is are we looking at doing this in elementary, middle, and high schools? And if we are looking at doing it in middle or even our high schools, would they be able to get elective credit for doing the scores?
Yes, thank you for that, Randy. Uh, Ben Torres in Nashville highlighted in this, in this template, um, policy that he sent us, the bottom category there, he highlighted that says, "We can choose to allow them to receive credit for the time as long as attendance is being recorded, uh, involvement's being recorded, okay, and that there's an aptitude there that they're, they're getting something from it." They can receive credit for it. That's up to the board to decide that in the implementation of the policy. His recommendation to that was actually that maybe initially going in, don't set that step, get the kinks and those things worked out, and as you begin to, to advance it out in your system, then add, amend your policy and add that in the appropriate way when you feel that it's the right time. Uh, he also spoke, um, tell me your first question, we're rolling out before that one. Oh, high school. Um, high school has the elective opportunity. They can actually, if we as a board agree to it, we can ask that an elective class be developed in our high schools. Uh, again, it's elective, it's voluntarily only for those who want to take it. But they can take a course on Bible, Sevier County has it. I don't know if Knox County does or not, but I know in the listing I just looked at a couple nights ago, there are forty-two counties in Tennessee, almost half the state, uh, offers Bible as an elective in their public high school. Uh, and it's funded, uh, by certified, it's by, by, by the budget itself and, and certified teachers and curriculum, uh, and I love it because the Bible's their textbook, uh, so it's a good opportunity. But it's different from what we're proposing here. And if I'm not mistaken, we can check with Elgin, but if I'm not mistaken, we're talking about second grade through, through fifth to sixth grade. So we'd be in those areas. Uh, one, one, uh, pastor that is a friend of mine that I know in Knox County, he's very up close to the Union County line, they're doing it there with Elgin, one hour a month, and they're averaging a hundred and fifty students from that corner of Knox County that come for that one hour a month.
And those school systems that you've referenced, I know you mentioned Knox County, I know Morgan County, how big are those systems? I know Knox County obviously is large, but like Morgan County, how large are we talking?
Yes, Morgan County is seven schools. I'm, I'm not mistaken, Jimmy, I think there's about seven schools in Morgan County. There might be a little more than that, but I think that's about right. Knox County is obviously off the chart. Uh, I don't know the number of schools in Knox County. Director Ridge, do you know?
There's a lot.
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, their student population's a little over a hundred thousand, I think, in Knox County compared. So, so I, I guess what we're, what we're saying as we say that, their program, um, is feasible and works great, and it's just kind of like our churches. It can work great in a small setting, a medium setting, or, or a mega setting. It can work in all of the above. It's a model that, that has a good, um, outline and structure working all of the above. Yep. And, and I think too, Ms. Randy, I, I think if we can move forward to send it to our policy committee to go to work on for us, then, then we just move, as Ms. Erica mentioned, we just move methodically here, uh, and if we get it back to a point that we can approve the policy, then we pilot it. We just pilot it in a couple of schools and a couple of churches that are close by in proximity that have the good volunteer staffing that meets the criteria. Uh, and I think we, 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 we set the scale there and see how it's going to go.
So, are we thinking it would probably be next school year then that we would start this, not this school year?
I really don't know that. I, and, and I would be fibbing if I told you, I'm a pastor, I wish we could start it tomorrow morning. Uh, but, but I think, I think time will tell us that, Ms. Erica. And if we did roll it out here, uh, in this second semester, again, it would be on very small scale once we've got that ready. So it would be a spring type into, into the end of the school year if we get it in place. I know the sooner we get started working through it, uh, the sooner we're able to do it. And I think it would all come under Director Ridge's advisement of when and when we're ready and, and what we're capable of. Yeah. Would you like to speak to this, Director Ridge? Do you want to speak?
Um, yeah, I mean, uh, if, if the board, um, would, was going in this direction and approve it, obviously, you know, we have a lot of steps and, um, worked with our principals and, uh, our teachers to, you know, find a way to execute it to minimize the, um, interruption that it could occur. I've, I've looked at some schedules, some elementary schedules, and some, some grades, um, currently have a, a pretty natural hour that, uh, could be part of recess and part of a special, but some other grades, it's, you know, every grade at a school, the, the specials rotate, lunch rotates, um, and, uh, recess rotates. So, uh, I would, I would say it would probably be a good idea to wait till next year, then see what schools are doing it, um, and, and make sure their, their schedules could, could, could work, um, if you're going to pilot it, so.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, I'll, I'll make that in a form of a motion, um, that we take this templated, look at it, but we send it to our policy committee for them to go to work on in collaboration with our Director Ridge, uh, to bring us back what it's selling this as well. Uh, and again, uh, for doing what's best, you know, if the, um, grasp, um, and, uh, it's a great opportunity to see our students, they're growing up, most of you, um, I'm looking around, most of you are close to my age, if, if, if not my age, they're growing up in a very different time than when you and I grew up. And we've got great teachers and we've got great schools and great systems, but along in a piece of that, I want to say that, um, it'll be a great advantage to the student, um, that has the opportunity to look at religious training and, and better understand what good moral values look like. We're going to want that in the next generation to come. And so I make that in a form of a motion that we send this policy template to our policy committee to work with collaboration with Director Ridge and bring us back the best possible policy for us to have an opportunity to go forward with the Elga, Elgin Children Foundation. A second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Let's take a roll call vote for that as well. Ms. Erica, can we please?
Yeah. Erica Moore. First pass.
Yes.
Ray Jordan. Five. Ryan.
Thank you, Ms. Erica. I think we come to the last item on our agenda this evening, and it's item number five, and it is discussion and possible action to a resolution, number two-five dash oh-eight dash oh-two-five, to add a school board member to the two-hundred-and-fiftieth year celebration committee, uh, for Blount County. Uh, I'd like to make, I ask for a motion to discuss. A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, discussion or questions? I'd like to make a motion in this category. Uh, I'd like to, to make a motion that we present Ms. Randy Howard to be our representative from the school. A motion and a second? Now, all in favor of that? Let it be known by someone there with us.
Thank you. Good evening. This is of legislation that directly speak with our state senator and rear in Blount County. Please know how legislation considered in Nashville would realistically and directly impact our school district, and I'd like to close with wishing you all a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rebecca. Next, we would hear from our student representatives, and up first tonight, we have from Eagleton College and Careers Academy, Ms. Audrey Wilson.
Eagleton has had a phenomenal month of November. For starters, our football program made it all the way to semifinals for state. This was the first time in Eagleton history for football to make it this far in playoffs. We would like to celebrate this achievement for the coaches and players that put in all the hard work to make it happen. Eagleton also had a team of students who participated in the Builders Exchange of Tennessee Trades competitions. This was an amazing experience for the young builders along with teaching them many new things. ECCA is also proud to recognize high school and middle school teachers and rookies of the year. The rookies of the year at Eagleton would be Kate Childs for high school and Carson Schrader for middle school. Teacher of the year would be Amy Lawson at, for the high school and Jerome Sullivan for middle school. Special congratulations to Mr. Sullivan for achieving Blount County Schools Middle School Teacher of the Year. Eagleton would also like to recognize our band for putting on an amazing concert. ECCA appreciates the hard work and passion the band puts in. ECCA also recognized six students in the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing class for successfully completing the Greenway Handbin, Handbending Certification. This was a great way to develop their skills and prepare them for the future. FCA hosted a cheer competition at Eagleton for the elementary schools and a showcase for the middle and high schools. It was an amazing turnout and a great way to unite cheerleaders on every level.
Thank you, Ms. uh, Ms. Audrey. Next, we would hear from Heritage High School and Ms. Ella.
Hello, good afternoon. Congratulations to these twenty-one Heritage Choir members who have been recognized as part of the All East Honor Choir. Jocelyn Barnes, Molly Kate Barr, Wayland Brazil, Albus Broxton, Gabby Connor, Gavin Foucher, Camden Fraser, Bryson Gabowski, Brenna Hayes, Laura Heck, Elizabeth Owen, Elise Ivans, Molly Lowe, Sarah Messingo, Sebastian Ortega, Lindsay Ombi, Lainey Sexton, Benjamin Smelzer, Kiely Staley, Bentley Wayman, and Rebecca Wood. Volleyball players Riley Snow and Riley Condi have signed to further their academic and athletic careers. Riley will be going to Pellicippi State and Riley will be going to Tennessee Wesley. Softball players Caitlin Russell and Portland, Portland Bennett have signed their letters of intent to further their academic and athletic careers as well. Caitlin will be going to Carson Newman and Portland will be going to UT Martin. Katie Webb and Taylor Crowe competed in the East Tennessee DECA competition in November and will be moving on to the statewide competition this spring. Engineering and robotics student Talon Birch is our Farm Bureau CTE Student of the Month. The Heritage Holiday Village will be happening on December fifth through the seventh, three magical days of lights, laughter, and holiday fun for the whole family. This Friday, December fifth, climb aboard on our special Polar Express experience. Enjoy a showering of the Polar, a showing of the Polar Express whilst, uh, sipping hot chocolate and enjoying a delicious cookie. Pre-registration will be five dollars off per ticket, and for more information, visit the Holiday Village Facebook page. Coming in the next few weeks will be our winter fine arts programs performances. The choir will be having their magical dinner show on December thirteenth and fourteenth. The Christmas choir concert will be held on December sixth, and the band concert will be happening on December sixteenth at six P.M. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Ella. Next, we come to William Blount High School and Parker Size.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, the William Blount Wrestling Team had a fantastic performance at the, uh, recent Tiger Takedown Tournament. Bryson Perkins took home third place with a technical fall. Isaiah Simmons also got third place with a technical fall. Montana Lundee went undefeated, three and oh, ranking up three technical falls, winning her division and earning the title of team MVP. On November fourteenth, we celebrated a major milestone for several of our student athletes on National Signing Day. Abby McCollies signed to Pellicippi State, Mark Sacraman, Carson Newman University, Caitlin Husbands, Freed Harmon University, Ava Ramsey, Shorter University, Chloe Merriman, Rome State, and Katie Owens, Rome State. We're also proud of our students that were recognized at the East Tennessee Regional Student Art Expedition at the Knoxville Museum of Art. Ashton Marchand, Lily McCracken, Chloe Merriman, Jacob Pickler, Eevee Rojas, and Alex Sharon. Want to say congrats to Doug Blair and his construction students who competed in the BXTN High School Construction Trades Competition. In second place for electrical was Josh Vaughn, Warren Patton, and Cameron Guren. In first place for plumbing was Wyatt Bruce, Grace Milton, and Nate Dunlap. Scott Reagan placed second at the Regional Skills USA Carpentry Contest, and we have a basketball game tomorrow night at William Blount against Heritage at six o'clock along with the Holiday Market, which starts at five, which will be going on in the cafeteria during the game. So come out tomorrow night, support the governors, and watch us win.
Thank you, Parker. I think there was some, there's some difference there, but thank you. Next, we would come to comments from our director.
Now, I would first like to say, um, um, safety and security is our top priority here in Blount County schools, and, um, to echo what Ms. Moore said, we're currently evaluating, uh, every opportunity to make it even safer and more secure. Um, so, um, that, just wanted to say that. Um, want to thank Mr. West again, um, and his class for coming and, um, streaming this. Uh, he will have a crew out on Monday and Tuesday night at Heritage Middle School to stream the elementary, uh, basketball semifinals and championship games. So that'll be, um, streamed on BCS Media on YouTube. Uh, other than that, um, Merry Christmas.
Next, we would come to comments from our board.
I just wanted to say, uh, our education committee meeting was at, uh, Rockford Elementary this week. I was really impressed with what I saw there, like I've been to other elementary schools in our, in our meetings, and I'm excited about what the principals of those schools are doing to encourage and inspire their teachers, and particularly give a hat, uh, a high five to our education, instruction coaches, when I heard that thankfully we've been able to organize them so that they're, you know, getting better time in our schools on a consistent basis, and the difference that they're making, the testimonials from the teachers, of how the, uh, instruction coaches are doing such a great job of helping them in those areas where they're having difficulty. We all know this, we're better when we're working together. We're not in competition with each other, we're just trying to do the best and be the best we can be. When you put the right people in the right place, doing the right job, with the right attitude, you're going to succeed. And I'm so excited about what I'm seeing through the school system, a change in attitude, and a change in enthusiasm, there's an optimism and a morale boosting effort taking place, and I'm excited about that. We're on the verge of some good things continuing to happen, and so, uh, I'm excited about that. And I just want to say to Director Ridge, we appreciate the leadership he's brought to our school and the way that it's been organized, uh, for effective, uh, education process, and so we're excited about what's going on, and you should be too. Good things are coming, and we're excited about it. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Just a, another thank you to our reward schools. Congratulations, uh, on the reward schools, and also Eagleton football. Uh, what a great season, what a great year, uh, and boy, we are so excited about what we see there as well, and then through our other campuses and the achievements that you're making, we're so appreciative, so thankful for all of you and what you do, and especially thankful for our director, Director Ridge. Thank you for being the leadership of us, and we appreciate all of you. Okay? As I'll echo what he said, we wish you a Merry Christmas and hope you enjoy the Christmas holiday season. Uh, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. We adjourn.